...in your presence with our hearts full of joy and peace and love. When there's so much different around the world. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the people that you have called to serve you in ministry. And we thank you tonight, especially for Bob and his wife and his companions all around the world whom you have called to serve you through Jews for Jesus. Father, we know that the Lord Jesus was of Jewish stock. We know that we have the written record back millennia which proves that. And Father, we thank you tonight that the Lord Jesus loved us so deeply that he came down from heaven's glory, that he gave up his position as the third person of the Trinity to serve you in human form. We thank you, Father, that he showed us what you were like, a God of love, a God of forgiveness, a God who seeks out the sinner. And Father, would that all of us here tonight could say, "Thank you, Lord Jesus, for saving a wretch like me." And we just bow before you now and we just ask that you will take the rest of this meeting, make it a joyful one, speak to each of our hearts, and may we go away from this place more determined to serve you in every way, but particularly with Jewish folk. Father, we just hand the meeting over to you now. Ask you to fill Bob with your Holy Spirit and just bless everything he says. We thank you, we praise you, bless you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Norm, for that prayer. We need that. Now, Bob, I don't have to introduce you. We got to know each other and we had coffee today with some of the men's.
It was good.
And it was, was it good? Was it the coffee or the men's fellowship?
Yes.
Both. Oh, all right. I will not ask you anymore. Now, can I have the third picture? Just want to clarify with you whether this is you on the picture. Now.
Yeah, it looks like me.
Not yet. No, you can see something, you can see something there.
It was dark and stormy.
Now.
Oh, yeah. I was 13, that's the day I became a man.
All right, okay.
My bar mitzvah.
Yes, so I think you have that, your testimony here. I have it here printed. Yes, I have it here printed. I went and searched and got it printed. Now, if you want a copy, I have in PDF format. I can send it to you. Is that all right?
Yes.
Yeah, and from this you can know his testimony. So you don't have to introduce, if you want, you can. Yes, I'll give you the stage now.
Thank you. Thank you. Shalom, everyone. It is a joy to be here in Adelaide for my, I don't know what number time, many times. First time, though, at Enley Chapel. So thanks for the welcome. And I've checked it out already, there's supper. Because, Lord knows, we can't go another hour without eating again. Come on, Australia. But I'll work on it. Do you have a Bible? You want to turn with me to Psalm 110, the 110th Psalm. "The Lord will extend your mighty scepter from Zion; you will rule in the midst of your enemies. Your troops will be willing on your day of battle, arrayed in holy majesty. From the womb of the dawn you will receive the dew of your youth. The Lord has sworn and will not change his mind. You are a priest forever according to the order of Melchizedek. The Lord is at your right hand; he will crush kings on the day of his wrath. He will judge the nations, heaping up the dead and crushing the rulers of the whole earth. He will drink from a brook beside the way; therefore he will lift up his head." It's a weird psalm. It's the second of three biblical references to one of my favorite Bible characters. Melchizedek, Melchizedek, please don't say Melchi-Zedek, he's not Latino. But Melchizedek is one of my favorites. He's only mentioned here in the psalm, in Genesis 14, after a battle with Abraham and some kings, and Abraham wins, and in Hebrews, Chapter 7. And that's going to be our real text, but I wanted you to see how the Psalmist put him in here and included some weird phrases. "You are a priest forever in the order of Melchizedek. The Lord has sworn and won't change his mind." So there's a swear, God swears, won't change his mind, and whoever this is, he's significant. So in that story in Genesis, we know that Melchizedek is a priest of the Most High. He's not a Jew because Abraham's the first Jew, which is kind of a weird thing to say because Jew comes from the word Judah, which is Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Abraham's great-grandson. So it'd be like saying, "I'm named for my great-grandson." It's just, he's not born yet. They're working on it, but he's not born yet. So how, how is that? Well, Abraham, father of faith, Isaac, not Esau, Jacob, not, sorry, Isaac, not Ishmael, Jacob, not Esau, then the 12 boys. And somebody named Melchizedek is here. Huh, who is he? For that, we're going to have to look at Hebrews, Chapter 7. And the reason I want to go there is that we've got a problem in the Bible. I don't know if you've ever felt this or experienced it, but what do we say about Jesus? He is our great high priest. What's the problem with that? He's not a priest. So he can't be a high priest. So he can't be a great high priest. What do you mean, he's not a priest? Priesthood in the Jewish religion comes from genealogy. You have to be in the order of Aaron. Aaron, the older brother of Moses, the older sister, Miriam, so the kid brother, Moses. Eighty-year-old, but we think of him as a kid. If you are from the lineage of Aaron, who is from Levi, then you could be a priest. If you're from Levi but not from Aaron, you can't be a priest. If you're from Reuben, my Hebrew name, or Simeon, or Issachar, or Zebulun, you can't be a priest. You feel the problem? Jesus, our great high priest, we go to him with our prayers, we go to him because he loved, and he can help and give us grace to help in time of need, but we can't because he's not. Do you feel the conundrum? Something's got to give because the Bible says he's our great high priest. So which is it? Is he, isn't he? Melchizedek is the answer. Hebrews, Chapter 7. "This Melchizedek was king of Salem and priest of God Most High. He met Abraham, returning from the defeat of the kings, and blessed him. And Abraham gave him a tenth of everything." That's the whole story in Genesis. Abraham meets him, he gives a portion of the goods that he's just collected from these kings in the battle, and Melchizedek blesses him. So there's a tithe, a donation, a gift, and a blessing. That's the whole story. From that, the author of Hebrews helps us with our conundrum. Watch how it happens. First, the name means king of righteousness. Melech means king, Zedek or Zadak means righteousness. Melchizedek, king of righteousness. How many of you have named king of righteousness? How many of you, are you named, is your name Melchizedek? No? Your parents had an option. They went with something else, huh? I don't know why we don't name our kids, beautiful name, not a Jew, a Gentile name. Sounds Hebrew, sounds Jewish, not a Jew. His name means king of righteousness. Then also, king of Salem, that's the location where he was king. Think mayor instead of king. King sounds like, you know, king of England, king of Norway, king of Adelaide, king of Olney, mayor, that's really all it is, all right? And Salem, of course, Shalom, king of peace. So where is this location? Salem. The city of Salem, in Hebrew, the Yerushalayt, Yerushalayt, Jerusalem. He is from the area we call Jerusalem today, okay? So we know he's a righteous guy, he's a priest, he is the mayor of Jerusalem. It says, "Without father or mother, without genealogy, without beginning of days or end of life, like," don't miss the word "like," "like the Son of God, he remains a priest forever." Now, it doesn't mean he didn't have father or mother. Scandal, I know. What it means in context is his genealogy doesn't matter. Every priest has to be authenticated by his genealogy. If you can't prove your genealogy, you can't be a Jewish priest. So Melchizedek can't be authenticated, that's why it says, "without father or mother." Like, not the Son of God, but like him. We'll see how this works. Verse four, "Just think how great he was. Even the patriarch Abraham gave him a tenth of the plunder. Now the law, Torah, requires the descendants of Levi, who become priests, to collect a tenth from the people, that is, their brothers." So every Issacharite, Zebulonite, Reubenite, every one of them pays into the temple, sorry, tabernacle, and then now temple treasury to pay for the priesthood, just like so many churches do, paying for pastors, you get that. "That is their brothers, even though their brothers are descended from Abraham." So even though Issachar and Zebulun and Naftali are from the same lineage, they're not exactly the same because of Levi being the preeminent. "This man, however, did not trace his descent from Levi, yet he collected a tenth from Abraham and blessed him who had the promises." And here's a key phrase, if you write in your Bible, if you underline, don't miss this, "And without doubt, the lesser is blessed by the greater." If you know anything about the Book of Hebrews, you know that the word "better" is preeminent. Jesus is better than angels, he's better than Moses, the blood speaks better than the blood of, better, better, better. So now, now we've got a definition. Who's better in this story? Abraham who tithe? No, Melchizedek who blessed. So he blessed. The blesser is greater than the blessed. You with me? This is really important because every Jew traces his lineage back to Abraham, who is lesser than Melchizedek. The author is very clever, Jewish lawyer, obviously. "In the one case, the tenth is collected by men who die, but in the other case, by him who is declared to be living." Melchizedek is continuing, but it's not he who's continuing. It's the one, as we read in Psalm, who is in the order of Melchizedek, in the framework of, in the style of, in the, we can't say family of, because it's not the genealogy, but in the grace of, in the power of, in the anointing of, Melchizedek. Even the, okay. This blinking is really a little off-putting, but it's me. "In the one case," in the other, "by him who is declared to be living." One might even say that Levi, who collects the tithes, paid the tithe through Abraham because when Melchizedek met Abraham, Levi was, you are a kind man, Levi was still in the body of his ancestor. This is so weird. But I, stay on, stay on mic because they're recording. Levi is in the loins of his granddaddy, a great-granddaddy, Abraham. So because Levi is there, Levi is less than Melchizedek. He's in the loins of his great-granddaddy. So Melchizedek, who lives on in the order of Melchizedek, is greater than Levi. I was a mathematics teacher back in Kansas, and I know that if you're greater than this and this is greater than that, you're greater than all of the rest of it. That's how it works. Let's carry on. "If perfection could have been attained through the Levitical priesthood, for on the basis of that the law was given to the people, why was there still a need for another priest to come, one in the order of Melchizedek, not in the order of Aaron?" See that little verse in Psalm 110? The writer of Hebrews is saying, "That's prophetic. There was somebody coming who was greater." Why did we need one if Levi and the tribal system and the legal system and all of the Torah was sufficient? It was insufficient. "For when there is a change of the priesthood, there must also be a change of Torah. He of whom these things are said belonged to a different tribe, and not one from that tribe has ever served at the altar." There's no, there's no Melchizedekian hanging out at the temple of Solomon or the temple of Herod. There's, there's not a Melchizedekian showing on his genealogical card. "For it's clear that our Lord descended from Judah, and in regard to that tribe, Moses said nothing about priests. And what we've said is even more clear: if another priest, like Melchizedek, appears, one who has become a priest not on the basis of a regulation as to his ancestry, but on the basis of the power of an indestructible life." For, now it's going to quote Psalm 110. "It is declared, 'You are a priest forever in the order of Melchizedek.'" That's it. This is so huge. Whoever this one who's coming is, he's greater than Levi, he's greater than all the rest of the Jewish people. Does that make sense? This is important. We're not done yet, but you need to get that. "The former regulation is set aside because it was weak and useless, for the law made nothing perfect, and a better hope is introduced by which we draw near to God." And it's not without an oath. There had to be a swearing, as we said in Psalm 110. "The Lord has sworn." He became a priest with an oath. When God said to him, "The Lord has sworn, will not change his mind, you're a priest forever." Because of this oath, Jesus has become the guarantee of a better covenant. So he's, the, the argument is that Jesus is in the order of Melchizedek, not the genealogical line of Levi. Now, there have been many of these priests since death prevented them from continuing in office. Every Levite dies, every son of a Levite dies, everybody in this order dies. That's why there are so many. We have to reproduce them. But, it says, "Because Jesus lives forever, he has a permanent priesthood, which is better, permanent, better than temporary." Everything about Jesus is better. True? I don't know. The Pentecostal church, they'd shout amen at me. I'm just waiting, just, sometimes they just yell at me, never know. Because he's become the guarantor. Now, there have been many of those since, but because Jesus, oh, sorry. "Therefore he's able to save," what's the King James? "To the uttermost," this version says, "completely." He's able to save completely those who come to God through him because he always lives to intercede for them. Here's Yahshua, Jesus, Yahshua, who is living to intercede for each one of you here at the chapel. That's pretty cool. That's pretty amazing. Now, I got this wrong for a long time. What was it that Jesus is interceding for? What did it look like? What did the Father look like? What was going on in the heavenlies when I needed some assistance? Because of my historic Jewish ultra-orthodox Jewish training, I thought God was like an Olympic judge. Six-two, Mendelson, you're out. I, I just had this impression that everything I did had a little taint, a little wrong, eh, that wasn't very good, and that God was a mean old judge. Then I discovered Jesus, I fell in love with Jesus, and for the longest time, I thought Jesus was kind of on our team and against the Father. So Dad's up there and there's a, "I don't like Mendelson, he's trouble." And Jesus said, "No, no, really, he's okay, he's okay. I died for him, it's okay, we're clean, we're good, okay, we're good." And I had that impression that Jesus's intercession was on my behalf against the Father. Boy, was that wrong. He's pleading with me to join the Father's family, the Father's order, the Father's peace, the Father's way of life. For God so loved the world that he gave his only Son. Don't miss it. Jesus and God are not, the Father, sorry, Jesus, the Son of God and the Father are not in opposition. They're crying the same thing with maybe different voice to us, to be reconciled to God. Do what God wants. Love your neighbor, feed the poor, do these good things. Intercede. Could you like fix things? Because I've really messed up last week. Yeah, he'll do that also. We have a great high priest. But this intercession is a go-between, there's one mediator between God and men. And he's not really taking our side against the Father. He's taking the Father's side on our behalf to make us into his image. Is that beautiful or what? I got it wrong for so long. "Such a high priest meets our need, one who's holy, blameless, pure, set apart from sinners, exalted above the heavens. Unlike the other high priests, he doesn't need to offer sacrifices day after day, first for his own sins and then for the sins of the people." Jesus died for your sin, for my sin, for those out there on Rundle Mall, for those cycling in Tour Down Under, for those who've never ridden a bicycle in their life. He died for every person. Amazing grace. I love him more today, please God, than yesterday, and so I'll keep growing in this because he's done so much for us. And he didn't have to do it for himself. Yeah, let me, yeah, Herod, let me pilot, let me take care of my business. He was clean. He didn't need anyone to suffer on his behalf. We did. "He sacrificed for their sins once for all when he offered himself, once for all meaning for all time, and once for all meaning for all people. Nobody's left out, no extension of ti," we don't need extra time like they have in soccer. We don't need that because it's been done already. Hallelujah. "For the law appoints as high priests men who are weak, but the oath," that's swearing, Psalm 110, "which came after the Torah, appointed the Son who's been made perfect forever." Did you ever read or confess the Nicene or Apostles' Creed? I like those. I, I don't know if the apostles ever got together and wrote the creed, but it works. It's a, it's a great compilation of what we believe. And I don't know if you remember it, but part of it is that he died and he was buried and he ascended into heaven and is seated at the right hand of the Father. Why do you reckon he was seated? Tired? Like you and I get at the end of a day? I mean, he had a day, ay, the Calvert Good Friday, and then burial, and then resurrection, and then six weeks later, and then ascension, and, pfft, I'm exhausted with these people. Have you ever, did you imagine that he's seated at the right hand of the Father because he's exhausted? Not even close. He's triumphant. He's seated royally, as we read in the psalm where it said, whoops. "The Lord is at your right hand; he will crush kings on the day of his wrath." There's something about his regal nature, that the ascension and the session, it's called, that he's seated is powerful. I have a great high priest who's residential and who's ruling in the midst of his enemies. I don't know what that does to you, but hallelujah comes out of me pretty easily. He's, he's the great high priest, not because he's from Levi, but because he's from Melchizedek, the better priest, the king of Salem, the king of peace, the king of righteousness. Because of that, I have peace, I have righteousness, I have joy in the Holy Spirit. Thanks be to God. And he doesn't have to do it every day. He did it once for all. And even as the priests were standing, it shouts incomplete. They offered a sacrifice and then they were substituted and the next one came. They all stood when they offered sacrifices. But Yahshua, because he did it once for all, sat. Done. The standing shouts incomplete, the sitting shouts done and dusted. "Tetelastai, it is finished." We have a great high priest. So when people ask me, "Bob, what can I pray for you?" I'll give you a list. I want you to go to our great high priest who intercedes for us. The Holy Spirit who helps us with groanings too deep for words. You don't really have to know details. It's okay, I'll happily send you some. And, and I want you to get our newsletter, and we've got prayer points every time, every, I think every month we send it out, sometimes electronically, sometimes in, in print. It comes in something called an envelope? I don't know if you've seen envelopes lately. It's like email, only, that's pretty good. Stories, questions, all kinds of things, teachings from the Bible, teach, sharing what's been going on with Jewish people. I'm going to tell you some of that in a moment. But I, we always have prayer points in there so that you can pray, so that God can accomplish things in partnership with you, with us. That's what missionaries desperately require. Do you know that? Do you know missionaries? There's a whole big patch of them up there on the back bulletin board of people you pray for, you support, you care for. And I'm sure those brothers and sisters send you notes and, "Please pray for, you know, our outreach there at the, you know, festival or something." And you pray. Well, you're talking to the God who can do stuff because he's seated. That is a tri- That is a triumph. That is a great feeling. We're not saying, "I know you're very busy." He ever lives to make intercession for you. Or as we say in Nashville, Tennessee, "for y'all." I didn't grow up with that, but I became a Tennessean. Well, that's what I wanted to give you, encouragement from the Scripture so that you can-- so you can have confidence. The conundrum is solved. Melchizedek is greater. Jesus is greater. He's, tick, our great high priest. As missionary, I've been a missionary since, well, really, the night I got saved. In May of '71, under a full moon, I prayed and I asked Jesus to be my Savior with a friend whom I'd just met about a week and a half earlier. I knew she was born again. She'd been helping me to read the Newer Testament, St. Matthew, St. Mark, St. John. I thought they were all Catholics. I, I had no idea how Jewish this book was. I, I was surprised. By the way, where's my Gideon brother? Where are you? Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I first was introduced to St. Matthew when I was a temporary resident of a jail in Pompano Beach, Florida. I say that so these guys miss it. And, did it work? I hope it was just they who didn't get it. And there was a fellow reading a well-worn Gideon Bible, not a testament, but the whole Bible in there. He was the one who gave me the money to get out. I didn't have enough for-- he didn't have enough to pay for his own penalty and fine. He was in there for trouble. I was in there for a light sentence. So for three days I was there. And he paid my money to get out. Was he a believer? I was, I, I went out. I was panhandling to get my way hitchhiking around the United States. So I panhandled that day, got the money, got back and paid, paid him back. But I'll never forget. I forget his name. I forgot his face. But I'll never forget that he was reading a Gideon Bible and was the one who graced me to get out of that venue. But the night I got saved, I ran home. I told mom and dad that I was a believer in Jesus and Jesus was coming soon again. Yeah, that, yeah, that, that didn't go down well. Orthodox Jewish home. It was like coming home and telling them that I was black and pregnant. No, you're not and you can't be. But I, I did. That's what I announced. And so that night, my father said, "Get out of the house." My mother said, "Let him stay one more night." And so I stayed. And the next morning, I got kicked out. And that's sometimes the cost that Jewish and other peoples have to deal with. So I did and got a new apartment, got a new job, got a new life in Christ, all within 12 hours. And the community of faith, the church, whether, whether brethren or Pentecostal or Presbyterian, I didn't care. There was a cross on the front. They love Jesus. I'm going in. And so I went every day to a different church and there were-- this was Jesus movement time. Did you see the movie Jesus Revolution? Yeah, that was accurate. That was so accurate about Americana and the Jesus movement. And I was, 1971, that was prime. Yeah. So I became a missionary that night. And the next day, at the new job, flipping hamburgers and making chocolate malted shakes and witnessing to my colleagues there around the grill and the French fry machine, telling them Jesus was coming back today or maybe tomorrow. Because I knew, because I'd read it in the, you know, whatever it said. Jesus comes, so I bet, you know, he's today. All right, I got my dates wrong. A little wrong. So I got it wrong. But he really is coming back. And I'm still burdened to go tell anybody and everybody the good news, whether he comes back tonight or splits the sky tomorrow or before the 40 degrees on Saturday, whenever. I, I, I just long for his-- do you long for his coming? You can't say, "I'm a little busy," or-- I mean, the hardest ones probably are engaged couples. Not yet. But there's just something about the proclamation of the gospel to which I've given myself since 1971. And I'm just going to keep doing it until, I guess, I go or he comes or whatever. I'm not stressed about that. Jesus didn't say, "Occupy about when I come." He said, "Occupy until I come." So that's what I'm doing. And in 1973, I heard about Jews for Jesus. There was this new group in California. And I thought, "That's, I guess that's me. I'm a Jew. I'm for Jesus." Okay. So I went and got a T-shirt made down at the King George V T-shirt shop, Air, whatever it was that they did. And a, a big cross and a big Jewish star and Jews for Jesus. At the same time, the group was going full steam ahead in California. And pretty soon, I said, "Well, I should, I should, I'm going out there." So in 1974, I went to California and I was so proud to wear my shirt. And it didn't look at all as good as their shirts. But I sat with Moish Rosen, founder of Jews for Jesus, that sunny afternoon in Marin County, California, at lunch that he was sponsoring. And he said, "Look," the first thing he said to me, not hello, not how are you? "What can you do to help Jews for Jesus?" I'm, I'm, I'm 23 years old, 22 years old. I hadn't processed that at all. I just wanted to see what God was doing and go visit. And I had started a church in Lawrence, Kansas. Five years into it, I got married and stepped down, became a high school maths teacher. And, but 1974, really seminal. "What can you do to help Jews for Jesus?" It haunted me, that question, for the longest time. I don't know. I'll volunteer, I guess, in Kansas. We don't have many Jews, but we had some. 22,000 in Kansas City, which is not a lot in America, but it'd be a lot in Adelaide. "What can I do to help Jews for Jesus?" Huh. So in '77, this one came through and that one passing through, like I'm passing through Adelaide for a week. And I welcomed them. They stayed at the house and they said, "Well, Bob, you should really join us and get out because the streets are alive." And I, I love the idea. So I even printed up gospel tracks that I wrote in the style of a Jews for Jesus gospel track. This is cool. And I'm handing them out. In '79, teaching school, loved it. But my wife and I were praying. She's now seven months pregnant. And I say, "I think we might be supposed to move to California and join Jews for Jesus." "But Bob, don't do that to your wife. They nest at seven months." I'm still out to conquer the world. So in September that year, we moved to San Francisco with a two-month-old baby. And it has been a great ride ever since. Ups and plenty of downs. We've lived in San Fran for nine months and then in New York City for nine years, DC for seven years, and the last 28 years here in Australia. We've lived in Sydney. You'll forgive me. I'm a swan supporter. You'll forgive me. But local, local, you gotta, you know, barrack for your local side. Forget Greater Western. Just like some of you forgot port. So I became a dinky-dial. We're citizens, my wife and kids and I. And we love being Australian. And we have two daughters who each have kids and live in Nashville. We have a son and his family and they live in Sydney. So we're bifurcated. You know how that works if you're international. You know that it's, it's not resolved until everybody's together, which is what heaven's for, I guess. It's, it's been a good innings. And I am really privileged to be here with you today. Would you pause--